Alright, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. We're gonna ask Councilwoman Harris to give us our prayer and Councilwoman Kroom to give us our prayer.
We need it.
I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Harris, too.
We're all coming for you this afternoon, oh God, so thank you all for your blessing. Thank you for your Holy Spirit, continue to fill this place with love and tender mercy. Continue to bless our man, continue to encourage him, oh God. Continue to put your loving arms around him, oh God, and rock him in the cradle of your love. Oh Lord, continue to bless our police department, our fire department, oh God. Continue to bless our city workers, oh God. Let your blood cover this place, oh God, let your spirit fill, oh God. Touch the hearts of your peoples on this council, oh God. Lord, we give you glory this evening, we give you praise and we give you honor, 'cause it's all belong to you. And you look on Sister Lane, oh God, you touch her body, God. Cover with your blood, oh God, lift her with your love, oh God. Let your healing begin, oh God. And you look on Tracy, God, as he go for golfing, oh God, you bless him, oh God. Give him a mind to receive and an ear to hear. Lord, we give you glory this evening, oh God, and we give you honor and we give you praise, oh God. Continue, look on our fire chief, continue to look on our police chief, give them strength, oh God. Continue to look on our finance department, look on Tory, Lord. And Tracy, as they find money, God, continue to bless this city, oh God. And do the things they need to do for this city, oh God. Lord, we thank you for the uprising. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon, we give you praise, oh God. And Lord, you bless the lawyers, if they go back home, let them be safe, oh God. Bless the highways and the byways as they travel, oh God. Lord, we thank you for your loving kindness and your tender mercy, oh God. Let this meeting, we release it in your hand, oh God. Cover us with your blood, lift us with your love. Let your blood flow through each and every one of us, let our love, let your love continue to shine. Let your glory, Lord, appeal in this place, oh God, right now, God. Lord, let it set up on each and every one of us, oh God. Let your love abide, oh God. Lord, if we too tight, loosen us up. If we too loose, tighten us up, oh God. Give us that love that runs from heart to heart and breast to breast, oh God. And Lord, we thank you right now for your loving kindness and your tender mercy. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Hey, can you do a golf swing?
I have a flag for the pledge. A pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the land where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, endless.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Mr. Clark, would you give us the roll, please?
Alright. Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suter.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce. Councilmember Cat.
Here.
Councilmember Kroom.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Councilmember Hope.
Here.
Councilmember Hutchinson. Councilmember Hutchinson. Councilmember Mohammed.
Present.
Councilmember Monday.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
We have nine out of the ten that's present. With your all permission, I wanna switch up the agenda to bring up our, I would say, permission request. Where I can call the Arkansas Municipal League, they come up and do what they need to do. Can I get a motion in second to change that?
So moved.
Second. All pay by?
Ah.
Oppose? Alright. Miss Amanda LaFever, will you come forward, please?
Good evening, can everyone hear me, can everyone see me? That needs to, anyway. Alright. I'm here to seek a motion to, or my name's Amanda LaFever, I'm an attorney with the Arkansas Municipal League. I'm the attorney that's been defending the lawsuit, or been defending the city of West Memphis in the lawsuit that was filed against it by a former employee, Ms. Lucinda Greenwood. I'm here to seek a motion to approve the settlement of the Lucinda Greenwood lawsuit and appropriate the necessary funds for doing so under the following terms. That in exchange for the dismissal of the lawsuit, a release of liability for the city and its officials, and an agreement by Ms. Greenwood to never seek or accept employment with the city of West Memphis, the total amount of $175,000 will be paid to Ms. Greenwood and her attorneys, 30,000 of which will be paid in wages, less all applicable withholdings, including but not limited to any applicable taxes. The balance to be paid to her and her attorneys with no deductions. Pursuant to the terms of the municipal legal defense program in which the city participates, the league will pay $87,500 of the total $175,000. And so at this point, I would need a motion by a council member to approve the settlement.
Motion to approve the settlement.
Second.
Uh, in discussion? Can I say something real quick, I just need to do the vote?
Sure.
I mean, it's mayor, I, I, I follow the direction of our city, of our attorneys, I've said attorney, of the attorneys. We have to follow them, but I don't agree with this, but we got to do what's necessary and I think that we're all upset right now, so. All pay by? Do you wanna call the roll, please?
Go to the call room. Okay. Councilmember Bruce. Councilmember Bruce. Councilmember Cat.
Yes.
Councilmember Kroom.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Hope.
Yes.
Councilmember Mohammed.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday.
Yes.
Councilmember Murray.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Got nine out of the ten that passes. Thank you, Ms. LaFever.
Thank you, everyone, for your time, y'all have a good evening.
Be safe going home.
Be careful going home, watch the trucks.
No trucks.
We had no bid opening, so, kinda like a motion in second to approve the minutes.
So moved. Second.
All pay by?
Ah.
Oppose? The minute's passed. We have no old business, uh, miss my, uh, we got new bid, hope. Yeah, but I think the council voted on table.
Tableing that.
If that's still you all wishes, can I get a motion in second to table?
So moved.
All pay by?
Ah.
Oppose? It's table. We'll move down to permission, permission request. Permission for the mayor to sign a contract with Pickering to work on the Ten Mile Bio Trail Phase Two, Westminster, Arkansas. So moved.
Second.
Uh, all pay by?
Ah.
Oppose? Alright, I have a request I need to ask for the council. We have a roof at Station One, uh, at the fire department. Uh, we need to get that repaired, it's $39,860. I'm asking you all to weigh, compare the bidding on it, so we can get that taken care of. We had a similar issue at the police support, we was able to get the start to render some of that with a molding issue within that department as well, so. With this fire station, can I get a, a motion in second to, first?
So moved.
All pay by?
Ah. Can we have the chief come up and explain what this is for?
What is it for, it's the, if you go, when it rain, going to fire station is, and you might west step outside. It's leaking in the building, delta roofing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
First working today, being mayor, a man who, that morning there, and it never really took a grip.
The number one fire station, is that one?
Seventh Street.
Yes.
Okay, well Seventh Street, okay.
You have two different roofs, there are a lower and a higher, and the higher one is where it's giving us all the problems.
Okay.
I was heard they did a part of it a while back, and the lower part, now they need to do the upper part of that. And it, it leaks bad in there, I've been in there.
And mayor, you said the fire department's gonna have to have the same?
No, well, I'd say, basically, a week or so ago, uh, the Department of Labor, a gentleman from the state came to the city, came to the police department, he looked at, uh, the building of the police department, he discovered, and we had some mold in the bottom of the building, and he gave us some scenarios on what we need to do to try to get the whole thing replaced, so. Killer just working on looking at the roof over there, it's weather, moving ceiling tile, drying up the leak first to stop it. So, I'll be back to you all if that never get outrageous, which I think I am gonna be back to you. So, uh, we can get that taken care for them as well, because, uh, he said they can't work in that position, the guy from the state.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Alright, can I get a motion in second now to approve?
Second.
All pay by?
Ah.
Oppose? It's approved. We had no committee reports, we would definitely discuss those at our next meeting. I had no presentations, announcements. You don't wanna have the announcements? Alright, today it's on the sixth of now, we have our Blues on Broadway. We know it's next door to our civic center, and we do it every Thursday of this month. I think Albert King Jr. is performing this evening, and, then who's the second artist? A King Kemp, A King Kemp and Albert King Jr., they will be performing. I got a few announcements I wanna say first. You all may have seen the interview, and I'm sure you all have here, that, uh, Family Dollar Distribution has decided to close here permanently in our community, which started July 17th, 230 employees would be separated from, from the company. As well as in October, the other night that we are being released from the company, and you know, that has brought a strain, that will bring a strain in the next couple of months to our city, having that many people in this place. As well as, you know, a week or so earlier, Carvana had laid off a couple, not a couple, but several hundred employees. I feel confident that Carvana will come back, you know, I just think that's more of an economy thing with the whole country that dealing with that, so I want to be clear, there was not just Carvana in Westminster, but there was Carvana, uh, Carvana that's all over the country, so. The whole country did it, but we was affected, 'cause there were some, uh, employees from Westminster that was laid off. Now, um, Family Dollar Distribution is permanently closing here in the city of Westminster. When I talked with them, I spoke out to them, I begged them, saying whatever we could do to help you all. So it was not that we didn't do all we could do, they decided to close, and their reasons why they say they were closing, because the building was outdated. There was issues with the building. Now, that was their reason, but you know, I think that the lawsuits from the state, I talked to the senator, he, he felt the same way. Lawsuit from the states was a lot that went on, and possibly the infestation that possibly came from. We know everything that was going on, that was one of the things that, um, probably factor a little more in the decision. But my main goal, and I think all of our main goal, to make sure that we can, uh, support and help the employees. You know, we have reached out to the governor's office, he have offered all resources that he have available. As well as I had a personal conversation with me yesterday with Dr. Childress, with workforce, they are working to have set up some workforce training. Here is where to offer, uh, available jobs, we're gonna reach out to some of the industries that's here, that may have some, um, positions available. You got Saflin, you got Bosch, you know, he knows right next door. There may be some areas where definitely we can offer support to, uh, some of those individuals, as well as our own city. We may have some positions here, there may be some qualified candidates that may wanna apply, so we definitely wanna do everything that we can to help those individuals become, you got 230 employees within two months leaving an industry, and they depending on their salary to take care of their family, that's definitely gonna be a major problem, so. We got some good things going on in the city, we got some big plans, I really can't announce, I don't wanna get in trouble. But hopefully, that won't be immediately, but hopefully that be down the road, that it can help some of those employees get some gain for employment once that's available. So, uh, my prayers definitely, and our prayers go out to Carvana and Family Dollar, so definitely keep them in your prayers. Also, a little note, on some good news right now. I'm happy to announce that the Westminster Port Authority was awarded, Tracy, you gonna love this. Today, $1 million grant from the State Waterways Commission. The grant requires a 10% match, which has been approved by the Port Authority. This award is the result of the study done by our engineer, HSDR, which was approved by the city council late last year. The grant will be used to correct hydraulic deficiencies at the port dock to improve operations and increase capacity at the port. You all remember to do this work, it's gonna run 1.2, so we got $1 million donated. I wanna thank our connections with, uh, Mr. Steve Jones and some of his state friends for having put in the word. Mallory and, uh, Philip went there and they did a remarkable job in presenting, so. Out of 1.2 million dollars, we gonna get, what, 900,000? I know that's what you've been looking for, bricks like that. Also, uh, MPO has been pre-qualified for the EPA Clean Air for our community. It's gonna be awarded up to 500,000, I'm not saying they begin 500,000, but what Amanda was working on is air filters that. Someone, as you all get up, you smell the smell here in Westminster, you don't know what direction it's coming from. These, uh, I guess, I don't wanna misquote it, but this, this, this type of machinery will help to, uh, direct us where it's coming from and help with the cleaning process of that as well. So, I look forward to that, and lastly, this is not concrete, but this is something we doing. Uh, the Ryan Road, the Port Security Grant has been given, uh, funds and opportunities that were released Friday afternoon for our A-Wing system. And we know that we are applying for 369,108, also 575,921 if we go toward the microwave system, and another 51,000 going to the APX 600 portable radio, which is a total of 996,305. So, we're applying for new grants, hoping that we get them, but that definitely be good for us right now.
Be much needed.
Definitely. Alright, um, two quick things. Also, you have a, this council body has a meeting next Tuesday at 4 o'clock, you all don't forget, right? It's to discuss what you all wanna do with the building, the neighborhood center, so. You all will be able to make that decision then. And last, I need to add this to the agenda, can I get a motion in second to add our charity funds to the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All pay by? Oppose? I need to make a donation, actually. You hear about it? I need to make a, um, donation actually to their organization, East Arkansas Aerial Agent for $800.
So moved. Second.
All pay by?
Ah.
Oppose? Is there any other, any other individuals that wanna give some charities and donations away? Alright, we move forward. Time to go to citizen requests, we have three, uh, people who signed up. What we do, we don't wanna get five minutes, you get your name, your address, and you come forward. The first person that will be speaking today is Ms. Tawana Murphy, will you come forward, please?
Good evening. Good evening. Mayor McClendon, city council. Mine's is easy, I'm gonna be quick, so I'm not gonna even be five minutes. I am asking for permission to use the Riveter Community Center for Project Let's Read from June 1st to August 3rd. Uh, last year we had it, and we had 56 kids, and this year we have, I think the number is doubled this year for the reading program. Also, I am implementing dance, African and modern, this year, so we can utilize the building all summer long. And so I'm just asking for approval to use that building.
What are your hours of operation? What will be your hours of operation?
It will be from 9, Monday through, well, Monday through Thursday will be from 9 to 3:30. And then on Fridays will be from 9 to 4:30 or 5.
Hello?
No weekends? No weekends?
No weekends, but I can utilize them if need be.
Well, well, we, um, trying to, trying to keep it for, in case we have somebody to have a picnic or something in the area, we can, they'll have somewhere to go inside and eat. And, uh, your program, I love it, I really appreciate you coming to our community, we need this for our children. And, uh, uh, we'll have to get together, the mayor, you know, years ago, we had, had a little commission for that Ward 2 and Ward 5. Would, would you appoint somebody to, to get with that, so we can get, um, get out, everything in line with it? You know, we need to get everything in line with the building, plus get furniture for the building and stuff, so.
Well, sure, I mean, if you would make a motion and you get a second to approve, we definitely do that.
Uh, ma'am, I'm assuming we'll have to wait until after the meeting on next Tuesday at 4.
Right, right.
To, uh, to see what availability we will have.
Yeah, I make a motion that, uh, we, uh, do a committee again, and so we can get together and, uh, uh, see all the things that we need to do, get with the city attorney. If I'm, if I'm, if I'm legal, am I legal, asking for a motion on this?
Well, I mean, we're, we're in the citizen's request part of the, the chip, I'm, I'm like... The citizen's request part of the agenda, so I mean, I guess you can make a motion at any time, but I don't think we're addressing her citizen's request with your motion, so it's really a different topic, so, uh, if she's finished, um...
Ms. Murphy, when were, I may have missed the date, but when are you gonna begin this program?
June 1st. June 1st. It always starts June 1st, yes.
Well, we're gonna, we're having a meeting, Ms. Murphy, uh, we're having a meeting next Tuesday at 4 o'clock, because there are other people who are asking for it, it's been a little bit of controversy. So if possibly you can wait until then to see exactly what the council is going to decide to do with it, we'd be most appreciative.
That's fine.
How much of that area, that building, will you need?
Well, you know, I haven't looked inside, so I don't know.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, uh, definitely, they had to get together Tuesday to discuss what they're gonna do, and then I'm sure they'll discuss how they wanna use the building.
Okay.
Alright, you can just get back with us next, next week sometime?
Like next week?
Yes, I will, I mean, if the motion pass, I don't appoint that, but I'll appoint that after Tuesday, and you all decide what you all wanna do. So we got a motion, in second.
Second.
All pay by?
Ah.
Oppose? Alright, I'll appoint that commission after Tuesday, and you all decide what y'all wanna do on it.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Second, we have Mr. Jerome Robertson, will you come up and give us, uh, your name and address in five minutes, please?
My name's Jerome Robinson, I'm here for plants and old Robinson. That park over there on North 11th Street, I'm sure y'all are familiar with it, on that end.
Matthew's car?
Nah, no.
Up with Monroe.
Okay. Through the years, like I said, my parents stayed right across from that park. And y'all know that you got a vacant lot off to the left on that corner. Or whatever, through the years, the basketball goals have been, you know, put back, or whatever. Now, you know, many years ago, a kid got killed out there, or whatever, and them basketball goals, you know, took out. But now, the traffic has came back, they're out there acting a nut, or whatever. I sent him and Bruce a video of how they drag racing all the way down the street, or whatever. They drag, or dragway all the way down the street, they get to the end of the lot, they do donuts, and they fly back up the street again. I go by my parents' house every day, or whatever. They play ball out there, I got asked in the movie, they car, or whatever.
Can I ask a question, is that what Carl Holden?
Yeah, with the building, you should be...
Okay, okay, go, go ahead, sorry, Jerome.
Alright, like I said, I go down there, I got asked in the movie, they car, they playing ball, or whatever. And they wanna act a nut with me when I ask them to move their car. My parents have been there over, oh, I'm 50, so over 50 some years. They shouldn't have to ask them to move their car. So when I ask them to move their car, they look at me like I'm a nut. Get confrontational, or where, when I got moves his car, like I said, it's my dad driveway, he'll park his car right there, park it right, car right there, and dare you to hit it. So what I'm asking is for y'all to take them goals away from me. So, like I said, I've talked to the people, I talked to the park commissioner, and I talked to the, them, they said to come to y'all and ask, you know, tell you what's going on, or whatever.
Are you talking about the goals?
Yeah.
In the, only, in the park, or the water?
Goals.
Take the goals.
Take the goals back then. I mean, this is a two-way street, I can understand y'all trying to get them something to do, but they're not respecting nobody down there. And my dad is the only one down there. Or whatever, he pays taxes just like everybody else, now through the years, y'all know how that park has been. He never complained, but it's getting to the point now, they act a fool too much. Or whatever. And like I said, I said something to him, cousin said something to him, and it's getting to this confrontation, or whatever. And last Sunday, they got shooting at him, or whatever. By time my momma make it up to the window to see what's going on, they ain't jumping their cars and they gone. So, with them goals down there, that's causing a problem. And I'm sure all of y'all don't wanna stay in front of a park where they drag racing, they playing ball, they blocking the driveway. Or whatever. I don't think none of, none of y'all want that. Or whatever. Like I said, and the guy told me, well, somebody down the street asked for the goals, okay, yeah, he may ask for the goals a couple of years ago, or whatever. And the other guy told me, well, I told him, not, the one other guy I talked to told me, said, I told him not to put the goals in. I spent money and they put the goals in, okay, yeah, you gonna spend money and put the goals in. Both of them people tried to do something for them youth, but these ain't youth, they about, look like they about 21, 22 year old, or whatever. It takes two people to try to do something. They're not trying to work with nobody down there, he the only one down there, so ain't no respect down there, so I'm asking y'all, take the goals back then. And also, I wish y'all go back there and look, 'cause I just found out that where the parks in with the goals at, they done created them an alley, they just drive up and down the street, they run their stop sign at Perkins and 11th Street, they run it all day long. So my dad gets in his car and drive, and they hit him, sorry, ain't gonna get it.
Excuse me, sir, are there any speed bumps in that area?
No, there's no speed bump, that's another thing. Look, last March, like I said, it's been going on for a while, y'all had some in the paper say, well, you got any complaints? Email them, my sister emailed, emailed them. Now, they came down there and put the instrument down there to, uh, I guess, kind of their cars go down there?
Trap study.
With no speed bumps were ever done. Or whatever. So I'm asking y'all, take them goals back then. And like I said, and that trail, go, just go down there and look and see what they doing. Or whatever, 'cause, and it ain't right.
Mayor, I can, I can vouch for, uh, Mr. Robertson is my neighbor, and he's been interested in the lot down on the North 11th. And he has sent me videos that I have at the turn, sent to the code enforcement, and they've gone down there and cleaned stuff up. Because one video he sent me, it was trash everywhere. And our sanitation department went down and picked all of that up. The other thing is, he's got invested interest over there because of his, his elderly parents. And, um, he sent that video today, and I'm gonna be honest with you, I thought, there was so much smoke coming out behind that, that vehicle that he showed the video to me on, I thought it was a mosquito sprayer. Because it was just smoke boiling out, but actually, it was a guy speeding down the street. Uh, so he does, he does want to make it better over there, improve the quality of life of the people that live on North 11th Street.
I agree, I, I definitely think he do too, you know, some of that is for us to lie, if you person the lot, that's gonna be the decision that you make.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I, I don't, if, do we own that lot?
Yes, we, we have that lot.
Uh, if you, council wanna, however you wanna do, but that, that's...
Well, I think the city attorney can explain.
Yeah, it just requires a resolution from the council if he wanted to purchase it, if we wanted to sell it. But my problem, I've looked at it before, and, and it's been owned for so long by, uh, there's no good description, legal description, transfer and title, so. Ultimately, I'm gonna have to make one that would be legal and transferable, uh, based upon the records from the assessor's office, probably, and, and looking at the plat... upon the records from the assessor's office probably, and looking at the plats in that area and lots, and you know, what subdivision it's in, and things like that. But the council would ultimately have to pass a resolution to sell that property.
But in the meantime, your real interest is getting those goals down, and that would solve a lot of the problem.
Cause like I say, I got a couple friends that are cops, they did come down there and sit there before it got cold last year. They came down and sat, and they kept it quiet.
All right, Mr. Bruce, go ahead.
Okay, I talked to Mr. Robertson, and I talked to some of the other constituents that live in that area. There is, they were definitely like speed bumps. They are, I hear, my street, my internet is going in now, so it's kinda hard to read, but the lot that's supposed, the city supposed to own, one suggestion, someone asked if they would clean that and maybe make those parking spots where people would not park and probably drive there, and also who would folks do not block traffic. So, I'm not sure if Mr. Robertson would be for that, but those are just other suggestions.
Listen, thank you, Dr. Bruce. I also would go down and look at, look at speed bumps, you know, and I hate to say it, but in some of our areas, every street in Westminster almost needs a speed bump. But definitely with a park being there, definitely keep the kids safe and, and keep your family from going through what they going through, definitely I can look for the speed bump. Now, for the property being purchased, the council wants the attorney to do his due diligence, the council can make that decision. Now, if you want that to be a parking spot, Dr. Bruce said you have spoken with him about that. I mean.
Yeah, he probably talked to church and them about that, but like I said, but the point I'm trying to make is, we haven't tried. I mean, they're not acting right down there, or whatever. And like I said, do y'all want to stay in front of a park? I mean, do you want somebody shooting ball all day long, get mad and take the gun out and shoot, I mean, shoot up in the air? Do y'all wanna stay outside it? And my parents have did for years. All them asking is, I would go down there, try to take care of everything like I'm supposed to, or whatever. I'm asking y'all to help me, they take, you know, they acting a nut to me.
Well, I definitely, I could just speed bump down there. I take it that part.
Now, as far as, as far as the goals, did the city put those up there?
Yeah, now, like I said, that's what, I talked to him, he said that, he told y'all it'd be a bad idea. One of the guys said, well, the kids need to do something. They both right, but the kids are not, the people are not doing it.
Right. I'm a member of the Parks Commission, and that's something we can address at our next meeting in a couple of weeks to see if we can get those taken down. Because if it's a nuisance and shooting is occurring, and you're right, the young Davis boy was killed there, maybe twenty-eight years or so ago. I, I know his mother, so.
Ms. Davis on?
Right, absolutely.
Is he saying that they're shooting?
Yeah, they shot that Sunday.
I can't hear you.
Last Sunday, yeah, they was shooting, and they took off, saw a runner. Yes, but this past Sunday, they was out there shooting, and they took off running.
City Attorney, is it proper to go through the Parks Commission to get those taken down, or can that be a motion from this body to take them down?
Well, I think that typically you would wanna take it through the Parks Commission since it's a park matter, but certainly this body can choose to override that if they wanted to, you know.
Can I interject one thing?
Yeah.
He, he did go down and talk to the Parks Director, Mr. Parker, and I think Mr. Parker sent him down here.
Yeah, he told me to come talk to you.
Okay.
I think one thing I'm concerned about is, and I understand the basketball goal thing, is when you do take the basketball goal, if you all choose to take them away, is that gonna solve the problem, or people just lathering on the lot, just hanging, doing this and doing that? I think it's a bigger problem.
Well, like I say, I understand what you're saying there. That's why I say, you take the goals down, put a merry-go-round, something for the little kids, and like I said, or CISO in that same spot. Don't give them no reason to come down.
Okay. Is it, is it fair to give the park commission on it first, and then bring it back? And I could speed bump on the street, cause no one should be speeding nowhere.
Well, like I said, it's gonna take four, cause they're running Eleventh Street all the way down, and then right there, the intersection, Perkins, they running out, and like I said, they created a path all the way.
And I want you to broach with me on that, cause you know, every street in Westminster almost needs speed bump, but definitely I do what I can to get some down and stop, especially cause the park is our responsibility. So, definitely wanna stop that, and I go down and look on, you said Parkway?
Yeah, North Eleven Street.
North Eleven Street, okay.
Back there.
I definitely get you a speed bump over there. Don't worry about that. We get that thing care. Yes, sir. Dr. Bruce?
I know that the park, that vacant lot is a problem, but basically, you know, it may be good if possible, if there's some illegal things going on, and shooting and all of that, it may be good to have one of our cameras sitting down there since it's our problem. And if we, we would have surveillance in it anyway.
Okay. I mean, that is an option. We're looking to do that as well.
And also, since we decided to, I guess, to take the matter of the removal of the goals down to the Parks Commission, I would like to get a general consensus of this body to see how you feel. So, when I go, I can let Mr. Parker know how we may feel about it as far as taking them down or letting them remain. It's not a vote, I just wanna get a general consensus. Do you think that that would help solve the problem if we take them down?
Personally, I think you need to remove them.
You said, we do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Now, again, I think there's some other stuff we can do for the kids there. You could put up a little six-foot goal if you wanted to, if it's just for the children to be playing on. But when you have adults, this is a problem. It's obvious from what he's, you know, brought to our attention.
If I'm, if I may, I feel the same way Tracy does. I think the goals need to come down. That's a dead-end street down there, and there was a lot of activity at one time going on on that end of the street when Billy Johnson was our mayor. So, I took, but I think, if I'm not mistaken, that Row Park has, most of those, the park equipment in there is for little kids. Yeah, it's for little kids. It's not for adults. But anyhow, that's my opinion.
May I say something?
Sure.
They took them down once before, and we shouldn't be following them down yet. They took them down a week. They had issues before, and they, they keep talking, one of them back, so they got them back. But they took them down, and like you said, putting, I'm looking for the little kids down there. There's some little kids running there, there's some important little kids.
And also, we had the same issue in our park on Scottwood, Horton Hicks Park.
And they took those down.
And they took those down, and we had asked that they put them back, and the residents in that area didn't want them back because it had quietened down, so.
So, general consensus to the Parks Commission is that we want them down for safety and...
Well, definitely, Jerome, I'm sorry, Ms. Robertson, you know, we go back a long time, but she would take to the Park Commission, and she got the consensus of the council, and pretty much since the council was gonna go, she's gonna go back to the Parks Commission. I would go down that street and at least get a speed bump in front of that on Eleventh Street, so they won't be racing down the park, coming kids playing. And if they doing donuts and driving a hundred mile per hour, I want them to be safe as well, so I get that taken care of. And I guess at our next council meeting, if you come back, they can give you the results of what they gonna do.
All right, I appreciate it. Like I said, just go down there, when the goals in, look at it, just, done.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
All right. We have our final person, who is Mrs. Wendy Love Smith. Will you come forward? Give your name and your address, five minutes, please.
Hello, good evening. My name is Wendy Love Smith. I live at two oh nine South twentieth Street, and I'm here because I was told to report back to see if you guys had agreed to give me permission to operate a senior and disabled transportation service in the city of Westminster.
Thank you. I think all the requirements was met, you did meet all those, so I mean, at this point, there's nothing, of course, from the, from the council, anyone to objecting against it. Everyone's here?
Yeah. Are you willing to travel, like, to the state? We're gonna operate out of Craighead County, Creighton County, Lee County, and, this is my husband, don't. We're gonna, we're operating out of Craighead, Lee, Creighton, Cross. That's the last one. We got, we got five counties.
Oh, okay. Is all the documentation?
Everybody that's in the service life that has been notified, nobody's here or called in rejection. She's got all the background, check insurance on both vehicles. I got anything to do with that last night. And we got all the permits. We have the last thing we need. State of Arkansas has granted me my DOT number, premier. I have commercial liability.
Is that it? Something else?
It seems like they met all the requirements of the city, they've met the requirements of the state. Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, will you call it over? I think it'll be fine.
Councilmember Bruce?
So, at this point, what am I?
Hold on, they've been calling for official approval. Councilmember Cat?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Councilmember Muhammad?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Whelus?
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce? Well, we got, I think this pass is approved. God bless you all, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Was there anything else that we need to add, and they wanna bring to the forefront? Just remember Tuesday at four o'clock, that meeting on the civic center that you are, not civic center, I'm sorry, neighborhood, the Roberto Jackson Neighborhood Center. I get a motion and a second to, Jerome?
So, move.
All pay by?
Aye.
Don't miss Blues on Broadway tonight. Dr. Bruce, we out.